Six thirty-one, if we can get started here. Deputy Clerk Schultes, would you read the preamble for us, please?
Yes, thank you. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinance of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the city council meeting of the mayor and the city council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, January ninth, 2023, at six thirty PM, in person at the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, eight North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, and simulcast on Zoom, Acting Mayor Matthew Dolick presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and WOW Channel seventeen and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel ninety-nine. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and WOW Channel seventeen and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel ninety-nine. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like to call to order the city council meeting today on Monday, January ninth, 2023, at six thirty-two PM, in the city council chambers at Prospect Heights City Hall, located at eight North Elmhurst Road in Prospect Heights. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call to establish a quorum, please?
Yes, good evening. Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Lovitzson?
I just heard from Alderman Lovitzson. He's running about five minutes late, so he will join us shortly.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum. We'll be anxiously awaiting Pat Lovitzson. Mr. Simmons, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The first order of business is the approval of minutes. And could I have an omnibus motion to approve the December twelfth, 2022, city council regular meeting minutes, along with the January fourth, 2023, city council strategic planning and direction special meeting minutes?
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
I abstain.
Motion passes three zero with one abstention. Item four, presentation. Tonight, we have a presentation for the fiscal year ending 2022 audit report presented by Sheridan Jurgensen, I'm hoping that I pronounced that right, and Chase Blazer of Eider Casella and Company. If you wish to proceed with your presentation, actually, before you do that, I just want for the record to show that Alderman Lovitzson just arrived at six thirty-four. And feel free to proceed with your presentation.
Well, good evening. My name is Sheridan Jurgensen. I'm one of the audit partners at Eider Casella and Company. I oversaw the audit for Prospect Heights this year. I just wanted to start off by saying first, thank you to Sherry and Bob and the rest of the staff. There is a lot of information that we need in order to do the audit, and we just appreciate their help with getting all that information and just answering all the questions that we have as part of the audit. There was a slight delay in the audit this year just due to getting the financial statements from the airport, which are included in your financial statement. So that's the reason for this year, for the delay, but kind of just out of everyone's control as far as getting that information. So as soon as we got it, we were able to finalize and get it out to you. I just wanted to just point out a few things in the audit for this year. The first thing, which is the most important, is our opinion, which is at the very beginning of the audit report, page one. It's an unmodified opinion, and under accounting standards, that's the best opinion you can have. And really, all that saying is that all the tests we did, everything that we looked at, that we were able to conclude that we felt the financial statements were free from material misstatement. And it also talks in there about internal controls. And as you know, internal controls are very critical to every government. And so not only are we looking to make sure you have good written policies and procedures, but also making sure that everyone is following them, which is the most important part of that. And so we are actually sitting down with everyone, making sure that they are following those, and also making sure there's proper review and approval, and that we don't see anything where someone would have too much control in any one area. And so from just the testing that we do and the internal controls that we look at, while we don't give an opinion on it, we would let you know if we did find anything or any deficiencies in those areas. And so we didn't have anything to that level. As you'll see, there is a management letter comment. It's just another comment. It was very immaterial, but just wanted to at least bring it to the board as far as just a few differences that were not reconciled on the bank reconciliation as of April thirtieth. However, since then, it sounds like the city has been able to reconcile everything, and there shouldn't be any issues going forward. So that was just a minor thing, but at least wanted to point that out. After the opinion, one of the parts that I would say, if you don't read anything else in the audit report, I would recommend you read the management discussion and analysis, which starts on page six. And it's just designed to give you just kind of a quick overview of what happened during the year, as well as to kind of explain what the audit report is and the different sections. It can be a little overwhelming if you're not used to looking at it, and so it kind of just breaks that down and explains kind of what you can find in the audit report, as well as some changes and the reason for those changes during the year. In the audit report, there's two sets of financial statements. The first is the government-wide financial statement. That's a more long-term outlook statement, so that'll show your pension liabilities, your long-term debt, fixed assets, et cetera. I'm not going to spend any time on that, but the second set of the financial statements is your fund financial statements, and that just shows the breakdown of the revenues and expenses, assets liabilities of the various funds. And that's on page, starting on page twenty. And on twenty-two is the statement of revenues, expenses, and change in fund balance. And you'll see that there was a net income of four point six million for the year. The majority of that was due to the general fund. There was an increase of two million, and then one point one million from capital projects. Then after that is the statements for the proprietary funds, so water and sewer and parking. And you'll see there that there was about an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase, mainly due to the sewer funds, had about five hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase this year. And then the last statement you'll see is the police pension for the year. That just shows the assets liabilities, and then same thing, revenues and expenses for that. Then the rest of the audit report is footnotes, and just gives more general information about the policies and procedures, more detailed information for fixed assets, long-term debt, pension. I wasn't going to highlight anything. It's pretty much the same as last year. There wasn't any new standards this year that affected any of the footnotes or financial numbers in the, or the numbers in the financial statements. And then at the end of the report is the statistical section that gives you ten years' worth of information, just to kind of see where the city has been over the past ten years financially, and trends, and see where things are going. So that's just a quick overview of the audit report. I also just wanted to mention, too, that overall, the audit, again, as I had said before, went really well. Last year, I think we had almost eighty journal entries, and this year, we are down to under forty. And some of those are just timing things. There's just things that get, they just don't have the information until we start to do the audit. So some of those are entries that are provided to us, but just as you can tell, just the entries being almost half of what they were last year is great. And yeah, so the audit went really well, and I can answer any detail or any other questions you have related to the audit report.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If there are none, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Next item, public comments on agenda matters. Has anyone registered, or does anyone wish to speak? There being none, there is no consent agenda, and there is no old business. New business, item nine A, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement between the City of Prospect Heights and Wisconsin Central Limited, and any draft agreement is subject to attorney review and approval. Joe, would you like to expand on this?
Sure. As the city council is aware, for really several years, we've been working to put funding sources and engineering plans and IDAT approval, a number of things together for the construction of the Wolf Road sidewalk from the metro station to the Palatine frontage. This is, as the sidewalk will cross the Canadian National Railway, it's necessary to have their review and approval of the plans, as well as a licensing agreement. Attorney Jim Hess worked for really the last few months, more so, going back over a year, with the Illinois Commerce Commission and the railroad, and this is a result of this. I would be remiss if I did not state that it was challenging, and the cavalry to get us our agreement came from Representative Brad Schneider's office. As councils were, Representative Schneider has also put this in as one of his community projects. It's been funded for one point one million dollars. So certainly, we're, I can't mention this project without thanking him both financially, as well as operationally, and that his staff going to the railroad when we had hit a logjam, and he broke that through, which is very important, because without this agreement, IDAT would put it in the, to be determined pile, and the possibility that you could wait another year, another construction season. As it is, and we're not pleased about this, we will get it started this year, but it will be late, so the plan is only to do a smaller section of it, with completion of it next year, hopefully by the Fourth of July, 2024.
Great, thank you, Joe. Could I start with a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or any questions regarding this for Joe or others? All right, I too want to say a word of thanks to Congressman Schneider, who's been very helpful to us. If there are no questions, could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lovitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Item ten, Staff Elected Officials and Commission Reports. Tonight, we do have introduction of proposed tax amendments related to short-term rental properties by Building and Economic Development Director Dan Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The city has discovered last year that our rental program, which has been around since 2002, which does include single-family rentals, we had a licensed property. We started receiving checks from Airbnb as part of our short-term rental housing program. That led us to do some investigations into our ordinance and to the property. The property is very well-maintained. You'd never know what's going on, and the gentleman who's operating it was very open with us. And then in reviewing, you know, he was in compliance with our current ordinance as it sits today, okay? However, we, our ordinance is written in 2002, prior to the advent of the alternative short-term rental market, the alternatives to your hospitality, mainstays hotels, motels, and such. So we've been working with Trustler's Office, Attorney Hess, and working with, doing some research, and we're going to be proposing a number of text amendments and an ordinance that very clearly outlines what's allowable and what's not. One of the problems that we had is, we were starting to get calls for, can I do my basement as a VRBO? Can I rent the room? Can I do things without any controls? We were looking at minimum night stays to ensure you don't get someone who comes in and just rents for a one-night party, you know, those types of things. We also want to make sure that whoever participates will be registered with a marketplace operator, the Airbnbs, the VRBOs, because part of their systems is there's a number of checks, balances, insurances, and also, too, they ensure payment and collection and payment of the potential taxes that go along with that and fees. I bring this to the council because this, you know, I don't believe we will have a large influx, and we're just not set up to that. However, as we look down the line, I think we found some very big voids in this, our ordinance, just because of the change of the marketplace, and we want to be prepared. We, because we already allow single-family rentals as a business, it's important that we get a handle on the short term before it becomes a problem. Any questions, any suggestions? This is no action tonight. This is just an introduction. We are planning to take this to the ZBA later this month.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Does anyone have any questions for Director Peterson?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I understand, everybody, when they think of VRBO, they think of Maui, Florida, you know, places like that. They don't think of, you know, East Clarendon and Prospect Heights. So my question is, because we all know that's not the purpose of that, or it is vacation-type use, by starting to regulate this in some way, do we open the door to say that's, you know, wide open to anybody who wants to, to do one week or three-day rentals of their house, which is definitely not what we're looking for? I mean, I don't really understand why somebody would rent their house for a day or two in Prospect Heights in a regular residential neighborhood, or multifamily, single-family, whatever it is, because it's not for a vacation-type use. We understand that when somebody rents a house long-term, or rents a unit long-term, you know, we all understand what that means, why they're doing it. But how do we not go down the road we don't want to go by now allowing or sanctioning really short uses of single-family homes in Prospect Heights that I can't imagine the purpose of?
The example that I'm going to use is the current example. This is a corporate pilot, private corporate pilot, who got relocated. For three years, he had a long-term rental program. That's why he didn't want to sell his house. He eventually wants to move back, but couldn't, wanted to have it as rental. In the three years prior to this past year, he complied with our rental program, did an inspection. What ended up happening is, when he comes back to Chicago, he has to now go and rent a hotel room because his house is under lease. He also knows it's not in every weekend and every day. And his clients that have been coming are corporate clients, you know, people that are flying in that may bring their families from different states for, you know, a long period of time, a week-long meeting, conference. He's had weddings where people have flown in. And right now, for him, it's a way to have more flexibility and use his house when he needs it, and generate some income better than a long-term lease. And then the risk and cost of, you know, someone leaving, someone destroying those, and that. The VRBO and Airbnb marketplace is very competitive on rating the tenants and rating the providers, and they don't want to have bad places. Our concern is that there's nothing in our current ordinance that would prevent you, Pat, if you still had your house on, your other house, single-family, from signing it as a rental program and operating it as a Airbnb right now. We have no rules. We have no way to control it. I have to just pay one hundred and twenty-five dollars a year and have one inspection. Now, they're going to have to register, they're going to have to provide potentially, at the request of the police department, license plates. Who's there? We can then go, if we get calls for services, revoke those, they're putting in, you know, somewhat controls. But because we, the city has allowed for a long period of time the use of single-family homes as rentals and license them in inspections, it's hard to shut the door now. Other towns have done things like, that were highlighted in Trustler's memo, as home occupations, well, they don't allow, they also don't allow single-family rentals. They don't license it, they don't do it. We have already established that use in the R-one district. This does not, will not apply to our R-two multifamily. This is just strictly their, also, too, looking down the line, there may be revenue potentials like with the Bears, you know, the expansions of corporate access, people coming in and other people getting out, as a potential for revenue for both homeowners and the city. But the biggest fear that, when Mike Perzicky and I looked at this ordinance over the last couple of months, is how unprotected the city was. And without any guidelines at all, that fear you have of someone coming in and renting a house for one night and then having a big glow-up party is more real than what we're hoping to accomplish by the set of, you know, looking at these rules. And, you know, it's, again, going to be first presentation. We've researched Airbnb, we've researched VRBO, we've talked to other communities, Trustler's offices, spent some considerable time looking at some of their other clients, and I believe we've written this to protect ourselves as best we can under the current climate. But again, ultimately, the decision will be of counsel. Is this a home occupation, then we're going to have an issue with people doing it under the current standard. And then, you know, we see them once a year, we do one inspection. This one is set up, we can inspect more regularly under this program.
Just a couple more, more comments and questions. What, I mean, if I had, if I was in a multifamily, well, I guess I am, but it's not allowed by, by, you know, because of our bylaws to be rental, why wouldn't we allow? I mean, why are you only going to allow single-family? I mean, everybody is part of our rental program, multifamily, single-family. So with multifamily, then say, why are you excluding us? Just a question for later on that we can talk about. And then the other thing is, if there's one thing I'm really good at, is painting worst-case scenarios. Being a father, having been twenty years old, father of three daughters, I can really paint some really bad scenarios. What's to stop some eighteen-year-old kid who gets upset with his parents and go rent a house for a week in Prospect Heights, and, you know, it's a bad, you know, bad things could happen? I get what we're trying to do. If we said everybody had to be a VBR, who is it, VR?
VRBO.
VRBO or Airbnb, and they were all under that program, and everybody's insured, and payments assured, and ratings are done, and people are, you know, vetted, you know, who are renting, and those that are, that own the units, and there's a lot of transparency there. But just a guy who owns a house, you know, it's got nobody in there, and the kid next door says, hey, let me rent it for a week, and, okay, you know, we paid one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we're official, and...
You hit the first seven bullet points of what we're talking about protecting, okay? Going with the company, vetting of the owners, registration of the vehicles used by those there, being able to go to the companies to get who are the tenants should anything happen.
I think what Pat's saying, though, is, what if someone chooses to rent out their house not through a VRBO or Airbnb scenario, where they're not vetting people who are renting their houses?
That, then, is in violation of the short-term rental program. We can go to shut them down, we can, we'll issue citations.
As you said, there's going to be provisions within the code
Correct.
that requires them to use a professional
Service.
service, I guess.
Either you're going to be up with a marketplace vendor, okay? And there's, right now, the two largest ones are Airbnb and VRBO. This, and we are very concerned about Joe homeowners thinking, oh, I'm going to be able to turn this into a cash cow. That's not what we want, and that's not the direction. So that's one of the biggest provisions. The other one is, is that when we license them, you know, if a person wants to license and rent their house, they provide us who their tenant is now on the, on the long term. We do check when we do our inspections, and we do follow up with those people, but this one slipped through the crack. And we do search the VRBO and Airbnb websites regularly, and we found out about one person that wanted to do a basement, and we went and said, no, that's not allowed. You're not a licensed rental, and we don't let people rent out parts of houses under our current program. So...
So I have a question. So are the rules going to help us distinguish between, let's say, you know, you want to, you've got somebody that you're taking in for a few months because they have some issues and they need a place to live, and you're taking them in for, let's say, two or three months until they get on their feet and they're paying a small amount of rent? Is that going to be considered part of that, or is that a different issue?
That's a totally different issue. If a per, there's nothing to stop a homeowner from bringing in a tenant right now and moving into their house, if, because most of the time, we never find out about that.
Right.
But if a person has a property that they register in our rental program, you know, and we've got quite a few single-family homes that fit that, for whatever reason, people have second houses, that, and they want it as income property, we do an annual safety inspection, we check the leases, we check, make sure all the life safety stuff is there. Do we have people that do that scenario you talked about right now? I'm sure. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about people that are planning to use it as income-driven property on a short-term basis.
Right, anyone else? Pat, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Pat. Or I'm sorry, Dan, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. We'll be coming back with some recommendations in the future.
All right, the rest of the Staff Elected Official Reports. I'll start with Michelle Cameron, Alderman of Ward one.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Ward two?
No report.
Okay. Ward three, Wendy Morgan Adams?
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Ward four, Danielle Dash?
No report.
And I have no report as well. City Treasurer Rich Tibbetts?
No report, Mayor.
And City Clerk Joanna Prisiasnyuk?
Same here, Mayor, thank you, no report.
All right. City Administrator Joe Wade?
No report, thank you.
Assistant Administrator Peter Falcone?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Finance Director, either way, do you have any other reports?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director of Building and Development, Mr. Peterson, did you have anything additional?
Nothing additional, thank you.
Public Works Director Mark Roscoe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, this week coming up, American Underground will be in town doing the bit of sewer televising that we had missed after we did all of our analysis, so that's starting later on this week. That was approved last fall, and they finally got us into their schedule. And then Wednesday, we're having our bid opening for custodial services for the city buildings. Our previous contractor, we were unable to extend that contract in November, couldn't come to the right terms, so we've been, Public Works has been doing it through since mid-November, and our bid opening is on Wednesday, and we're looking forward to having a new contractor in probably by the start of February, if all works out well. So heads up on that. That's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief Kevin Negro?
Yes, very quickly, I can report that the weather in the Dominican Republic was eighty-three and sunny for all seven days. Quick, real quick... Quick, real quick, as far as the Pre-Trial Fairness Act that we've all been hearing about and some have been involved in, as many of the municipalities and cities scurried to get the paperwork, we each had to come up with our own paperwork. I don't know, this fairness, pre-fairness act was, we were given at least a year's notice and somehow, some way, the state didn't provide the paperwork needed if we were to send somebody or cite somebody with a ticket or summons them to court. So, I mean, we spent a couple hundred dollars to get our forms ready for January 1st. We actually got it two days before the first. As we all know by now, that's on hold and from what I understand, the first hearing is going to be sometime in March. So that Pre-Trial Fairness Act is on hold until most likely mid-March. So we'll see what happens with that. The Safety Act is still in place. There's a lot of good things in the Safety Act. Most departments and most court officials did have issues with the Pre-Trial Fairness Act. So maybe they straightened that all out before the hearing, but that's good news for us and most law enforcement agencies that they're holding off and going forward with that. Other than that, I have no report.
All right, thank you, sir. City Attorney, Jim Hess?
No report. Thank you.
And Deputy Clerk, Shultheis?
No report. Thank you, Mayor.
Digital Communications Technician, Mr. Holman?
No report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the approval of warrants. Madam Clerk?
Yes. We have a total for the warrants as being 76,402 and 72 cents. Wire payments, we have December 30, 2022 payroll amounted to 174,037 and 42 cents. The Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund for December amounted to 20,140 and 66 cents, bringing the total warrant amount to 270,580 and 80 cents for tonight's council's approval, please.
Could I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, unless there are any corrections. Could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Delik?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Item 12, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Matters. We do have one person registered, Jerry Simmons. You'd step up and just state your name for the record and your address, please.
My name is Jerry Simmons. I live at 101 East Clarendon. I, I wanted to come up and talk about the, we, I have, I represent people at the River Trails Condo Association. It's 360 units, one where the fire was a few years ago. And we got a call a month or so ago, the chief and a couple of the other, and the mayor, and we, we had this little crime pow-wow, I guess we call it. They called all the managers, the boards of directors, and there's a lot going on on that side. And I know, I don't know, you know, some people are aware of it. I was not aware of it. I, I don't work there, but I have property there, I don't live there, but things were going on that I wasn't even aware of and I was quite taken aback. There's, and there's a lot of issues right now. Dan actually is working on, we, we have flood insurance there. They spent tens of millions of dollars on that along Milwaukee to get that all straightened out, to get us out of that flood zone. And here we are, years later, we're still in it. It's absolutely ridiculous and I sent Dan all the invoices over the last, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars have been wasted because there's, there's one pipe that needs to be connected. So on behalf of us, we're, we're behind Dan 100%, whatever he can do to get that taken care of. Every single year, it's about $12,000 a building to insure and just my, our project alone is 16 buildings. So the, the amount of money's not, nothing small at all. But the, the reason that meeting was held was for the crime. There was, somebody had shot in 40-something shots over one of the buildings over there. And then I think the other day, another, I guess it's Young Punks, 13-year-old or something got shot. And we've been thinking about it and the, the chief made a couple of recommendations that he felt would help him. One was a fence. We're working on trying to get the money to get that taken together, but I started thinking about, it's not just bad tenants, it, it sounds like it's bad, big, bad, there's some bad landlords too. And that just aggravates, as a, as a property owner and investor, that, that just bugs the crap out of me. We pay 125 dollars a year to get a license and they come out and they inspect it and he goes, well, now it's Gonzalo. They go through, you know, everything, a bullet hole or whatever, that kind of stuff should be reported and they should have to replace that immediately. So we have 1,807 units that are under this leasing program, which it's well over 225,000 dollars. So, and I know we have to pay, there's administrative costs and everything, but just as an idea that I had thought of is if we could take some of that money, if we could almost make it like, like a benefit system, like if you, if you, the inspector comes in and everything's good with your property, you get your license, you know, God bless you, go on with your life, you're doing everything's, everything right. But I'm really concerned about some of these six-unit buildings along Piper Lane where the chief was saying in one instance, somebody, one of his officers was in a chase and the door didn't operate properly, the crash door was not working, and they looked it up and that was reported on the inspection and it wasn't replaced. So I started thinking, maybe we could say, you know what, you, you didn't, you didn't get this done in 30 days, maybe give them a big fine and maybe if they don't do it after so many, a month or something, we could just start saying, your, your license is suspended. You, you know, this is a privilege that you have to have. You have to prove that you're a responsible property owner and if you can't keep your property up to where safety's the number one priority, then maybe you shouldn't be, maybe this isn't the town for you, maybe you shouldn't get a rental license. So I know I'm not in a position or I don't know anything about the laws or anything, but that had come to me, that we could use it more like a reward system as opposed to like a punitive system. In wheeling, you get the same thing, it's 125 dollars a year, they come out, if you have no, no, nothing's wrong with the property, you get three-year break. You don't have to have inspected and you don't have to pay for three years. If they find something and you fix it within 30 days, they come back out and check it, two years, you get a two-year break. And then if you find, if they find something and you're just, you know, you're not going to fix it for whatever reason, then you're, you're back on the program every year and you get fines and things attached to it. And I just thought because there's, it's so dense over there that there's got to be some kind of relief valve where police don't have to worry about if the doors are working or if the windows are broke. I know, I could speak for our project, which is 360 units. Everything's checked, there's a property manager on site, we go through consensus forms with every tenant. Everything has to be registered with our property manager and then of course, we get together with Jen before the licenses are done. So we're not, we're not part of the problem and it just seems, but we would do whatever we had to do to get this under control because we, nobody wants it to get any worse. And then just one other thing, I didn't even know you were doing it. I've been working with, Fox Lake is doing Airbnb. I think we're going to have it next week and I'll give you all the stuff. We did the thing at, I have a property up at Fox Lake and they said, no more Airbnb licenses. They tried to squash it and you really, can't really do that. It's, if, there's been a lot of pushback on that. So now we just developed a list of what each individual property has to have in order to qualify for this program. So once I get it next week, I'll, I'll send it to Dan. But basically the crime is what, what I wanted everybody to know. The chief is, is doing everything he can. He's got guys working, he's working, and whatever we could do to help him, that's what we want.
All right, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. That brings us to, well, first of all, is there anyone that wishes to speak on non-agenda items? That was the only person I had registered. Tonight, we have no executive session, so that brings us to adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.